Thank you very much. My name is Richard Abbott down here in Kaua. And I'm here today to testify and support Resolution 112-15 relating to campaign spending introduced by Gregori Iligon. And I think this is, although this is just a resolution, it's very important that we continue the discussion here about the impact on our political system. And after the last election, I think that all of us agree that certainly a better system could exist and that the transparency that's required as we continue to evolve both as a country and a state. State on how we deal with First Amendment rights and corporations as well as interest groups and other sort of packs that the funding sources may be at best difficult to ascertain and the motives and the interests behind the money, especially off island. So, thank you very much for that. And then also, I wanted to support today Bill 283, which is a compromise that was first introduced by Mr. Kern and elevates the concerns raised by previous council member Brenda Ford and continues the discussion on the necessity of the planning director at the very top to be able to be required to make sure that the consultations in the local design and for consistency in our planning and zoning efforts actually come about and also to save the county legal fees and extreme expenses that can result from just not taking due diligence at the very beginning of the process. Thank you very much.
Mahalo for your testimony. Okay, Waimea, you're next.
Good morning, Chair. Our testifier this morning is Farah Marie Gomez, representing UH Hilo North Hawaii Education and Research Center. And she is in support of Resolution 108-15.
Aloha, Chair Kanuha, Vice Chair Poindexter, and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony and support of Resolution Number 108-15 relating to a sign variance for one ground sign to be placed in the corner of Plumeria and Lehuua Streets in Honoka'ua. My name is Farah Marie Gomez, and I submit testimony today as the Director of the University of Hawaii at Hilo's North Hawaii Education and Research Center. Founded in 2006, the NHIRK, as we're more affectionately known in the community, is located 40 miles north of the main UH Hilo campus and serves the rural communities of Hamakua and North Hawaii by providing essential educational opportunities. The center offers UH Hilo college courses. The first course was offered in 2008. Since then, NHIRK has enrolled over 500 students, including one member of your current council. NHIRK also provides non-credit classes and events for low or no cost and serves as a community meeting place. NHIRK's location is ideal as many consider it close to a middle point between Hilo and Kona. NHIRK can accommodate groups up to 100 people. In 2013, we hosted over 17,000 users, and in 2014, we hosted over 22,000 users. Despite these numbers, though, we still have residents and visitors comment that they are not aware of our existence or of our offerings. Thus, the need for a sign to assist with keeping the public informed about the important value that NHIRK is adding to the community. The request before council today is for variance from Chapter 3, Section 3-12A to allow one directory sign on the property where we operate. Chapter 3, Section 3-12A states the ground sign should not exceed eight square feet in area relating to a business conducted on the premises, providing that the building in front of which the sign is displayed is set back not less than 30 feet from the street. The nearest building to the sign will be over 100 feet away from both the sign and the street. Only NHIRK-related business will be publicized on the sign. Therefore, the only item not in compliance with the current county code is the size of the sign. The location where this sign will be located is on a hill on the side of Plumeria Street that runs Mauka to Makai. It is a two-sided sign for the purpose of traffic in both directions, being able to see what is on the sign. The location of the sign will not obstruct the view of traffic in either direction because of its location up on a hill on the side of the street. That is partly the reason why the sign is needed to be a bit larger than permissible by code. Factoring in the amount of setback needed, the increased size of the sign still makes it visible as people pass by, which thereby decreases safety concerns that might be anticipated if the sign were smaller and people tried to slow down or stop on the hill to read the sign. For the reasons above, I humbly request this council to support this resolution. Again, thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony. Mahalo.
Mahalo for your testimony.
Chair?
Yes.
We've had a second person sign up for testimony.
Okay, you can bring them up.
Our second testifier today is Patty Cook, representing Waimea Middle School, speaking in support of Resolution 106-15.
Good morning, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for considering this a school resource officer for Waimea Middle School. This is something we've actually wanted for more than 10 years, and we're thrilled when we found out that the Department of Justice had granted the grant. And sincerely appreciate the county councils taking this under consideration, knowing that there is cost involved to the county to sustain the program. We've recently received accreditation for the middle school. We're the sixth, seventh, and eighth middle school of the community, even though we are a charter school. We operate on a much smaller budget than most schools, and we do have a very strong program of positive behavior supports for our kids. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade needs that. That's how you get them launched into high school and college and career. And this would really sincerely, we think, help move in that direction because it is positive behavior supports. It is not a penal process, but rather really teaching healthy habits and good choices for school and life. Thank you so much.
Mahalo for your testimony. Okay, now we'll go to Kohala. Kohala, you can just bring up your next three testifiers, and please let me know if you have any more.
Mahalo, Chair. The first two testifiers will be in support of Resolution 99-15. The first testifier's name is Lucy Posco. She's representing Kohala seniors. And the second will be Marlene Ching, representing Kohala seniors also. Please restate your name.
I'm Lucy Posco, and I'd like to say good morning to all, and thank you for letting us have a voice. Voicing for myself and for 200-plus senior citizens, I'd like to say thank you, Margaret, for all the financial help that you're putting our way. We need transportation money to get out of Kohala to go and visit areas that we have been to maybe like 15, 20 years ago, or maybe never before. And then, of course, for all of our children, that we do have grounds, we do have facilities that needs to be upgraded. And with all this that you had put through this resolution, I know it would be a big help to our community. So, Margaret, again, I'd like to say thank you very much for supporting all of us.
Thank you, Margaret. Please restate your name.
My name is Marlene Ching, and I'm here again to thank Margaret for helping us in the past. In regard to testimony 99-15, the seniors would like assistance in transportation to variable sites and programs, especially the Christmas party. Our seniors don't get out of Kohala very often. They receive only a small social security. We again would like to thank in advance for your help.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, I'd like to introduce Margaret McFedries. Did I mess that up? Sorry. In support of Bill 99-15, and she represents the seniors. Please restate your name.
My name is Margot McFedries, and I'm here in support of 99-15. And again, thank you, Margaret, for all that you've done. The big thing is the Christmas party. We really need to be able to take a bus to the Christmas party. You don't want that many seniors driving on the road that day. It's a long drive. And we are seniors. The bus has gotten very expensive, and the seniors, in our last meeting, we overwhelmingly voted to go to one of the hotels for our party because we don't get out very often. And everybody likes a chance to get out at least once a year. So, thank you again, and we hope for the money.
Thank you for your testimony. I have no further testifiers.
Okay, thank you, Kohala. We will go back to Pohua. Pohua, can you bring up your next two testifiers, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next testifier, we have John Olson, representing PTCC, and he is testifying in support of Bill Number 282, 283, and 291. Mr. Olson?
Yes, John Olson here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. This has been a long time in coming. The concepts that are represented in these three measures that are before you today started with the creation of Main Street back in 1992, when we received federal grant monies to do community visioning work. It was revisited with the 1995 CDP. It was revisited again in the last Community Development Plan. The community steadfastly, over the decades, have been supportive of the concept of preserving the village in its visual state and its concept. So, thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Our next testifier, we have Mark Hinshaw, who is representing Pohua Regional Town Center and Main Street Pohua, and he is testifying in support of Bill Numbers 282, 283, and 291. Mr. Hinshaw.
Thank you, Nadia. Aloha, Chair Kanuha and Vice Chair Poindexter and council members. As chairperson of the Pohua Plan Committee under the County Planning Department and as president of Main Street Pohua, which is our Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank each of you for your unanimous support so far in these very three important ordinances, 282, 283, and 291, that are designed to protect and preserve Pohua's historical sense of place. As Mayor Canoe once told our planning group, "Plan for the town, yet preserve the village." And that is a step in that direction. I'm now off to attend the grand reopening of Malama Marketplace, our largest grocery store in Pohua. Good things are happening in our town. I urge you to support the return of a lava viewing center, which generated over 1,500 visitors per day to our town, a real economic driver that needs to return to Pohua Town. We have been meeting with council members Iligon and Puleka, discussing the needs of Pohua Town, and we are grateful that we finally have two council reps that truly represent Pohua. Mahalo, Gregor and Danny. Mahalo new to each of you council members to enter the leadership for your support. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mahalo for both your testimonies. Okay, I want to ask the sites again, is there anybody else wishing to testify before I close public testimony? In Kona as well. Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will close public testimony and begin at the top of the agenda. I have a few items that I will probably take out of order. One is the nomination of Nani Loa Pogline, but first, we will go to Communication 172.
Communication 172, nomination of Wesley T. Takai to the Tax Board of Review from Mayor William P. Canoe dated February 11, 2015, submitting for the council's review and confirmation the above nomination. Waived, F.C.
May I have a motion to approve the nomination?
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Puleka and seconded by Ms. Poindexter. Shar, I think I saw Shar in Hilo.
I'm here.
Oh, got it. Shar, can you introduce your nomination?
Morning, Chair Kanuha, members of the county council. Mayor Canoe's nominee to the County of Hawaii Tax Board of Review is Mr. Wesley T. Takai. He is a lifelong resident of Hawaii. He retired from the County of Hawaii in 2007, where he worked in the Real Property Tax Office as a real property tax appraiser, appraiser supervisor, and administrator. Mr. Takai previously served as vice chair of this board, and it was for a four-year term from 2008 to 2012. He states that he's not affiliated with any political party, and if confirmed, he'll serve a term to end on December 31 of 2019. He replaces Mr. Scott Church, whose term expired on December 31 of last year.
Mahalo, Shar. Mr. Takai, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, not really.
Okay, thank you. Well, I will open it up for discussion with the council members. Mr. Chung.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I speak in strong support of this nomination. As most of you know, Mr. Takai has a fantastic resume. And, you know, I really don't know if there are too many persons out there who are more uniquely qualified to serve on this tax board as Mr. Takai. So, I wanted to congratulate him and thank him for, you know, coming back to public service. Thank you very much.
Mahalo, Mr. Chung, Ms. Poindexter.
Yeah, I would like to also say thank you to Mr. Takai. We've had several meetings, and I was like very impressed with his wealth of knowledge. So, thank you for your willingness to serve, and I will be supporting the nomination.
Mahalo, Ms. Poindexter. Is that Mr. Iligon?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, go right ahead, Mr. Iligon.
Thank you. I also want to support Mr. Takai. I got to know him last term and really got an understanding of how he thinks and how he does things. And he, from my impression, was that he's very level-headed, and he's really perfect for this board. And even though we actually disagree on some of the things regarding the tax code, I do respect the fact that he looks at both sides and makes a decision. So, I want to support him. And, sorry, I'm measly distracted, and there's always an echo, so I gotta learn how to accept this echo. But I just want to voice my support, and I hope other council members will also support him, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iligon. We'll make sure to, that all of our microphones are off, or the other sites. Other sites, please make sure your microphones are off as well. Okay, council members, any other discussion? Oh, Ms. David.
Good morning, Mr. Takai. I just would like to express my support for your nomination, and I really believe that your institutional knowledge is very valuable, and I'm very happy that you have volunteered and accepted this service. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Ms. David, Ms. Eoff.
Thank you, and I'm also going to thank you, Mr. Takai, for coming back to this commission and offering your institutional knowledge. I also want to thank you for your military service, which I read on your application is very extensive. So, mahalo to you.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff, Ms. Willie.
Yes, thank you, Wesley, for agreeing to do this. And I wondered if you wouldn't mind just saying a few words for the public to explain what the Tax Board of Review does.
Well, the Tax Board of Review is an independent board that hears appeals from taxpayers concerning exemptions, and if their values are too high, you know, they can submit data to prove that the county's value might be too high, so they can, the board will decide what values would be correct. And it's very independent. I think, actually, I served five years, and the first year that I was there in 2008, we had over almost 1,500 appeals. We spent 26 working days in hearings, and that was very challenging, but very good. And I think all the board members are very conscientious, and that's why I came back. I think you still have a very good board. If you have any other questions about the workings of the board.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Anybody else? Okay, hearing or seeing none, all in favor of approving the nomination of Wesley Takai. Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's nine ayes. Mahalo, Mr. Takai, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving next. Shar, you can stay right there. Mr. Clerk, Communication 141.
Communication 141, A W E S C-1, nomination of Nani Loa K. Pogline to the Game Management Advisory Commission from Mayor William P. Canoe dated February 11, 2015, submitting for the council's review and confirmation the above nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Nani Loa Pogline?
Still moved.
It's been moved by Ms. David and seconded by Ms. Eoff. I apologize if I said your name incorrectly, so you can repeat it afterwards when Shar introduces yourself. So, Shar, you can, you may begin.
Okay, good morning again, council. Chair members of the council, Mayor Canoe's nominee from Council District 4 to the County of Hawaii Game Management Advisory Commission is Nani Loa Nani K. Pogline. Ms. Pogline is a lifelong resident of Hawaii, a self-employed custom ceramic tile designer artist. She volunteers as a representative on the Mauna Kea Recreational User Group and the Good Shepherd Foundation. She states that she's not affiliated with any political party, and if confirmed, she will serve a term, she will serve the remainder of a term to end on December 31 of 2016, replacing Paul Biltman, who resigned.
Mahalo, Shar. Aloha, Nani.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank the good mayor, our good mayor, and the county, the county council, and my wonderful supporters for this honor and privilege to serve as a commissioner on the Game Management Advisory Commission. This commission is particularly important to me and with issues that are on my heart. And I would like to say that I will do my very best to serve the mayor, the county, and the people of Hawaii as a commissioner. Thank you very much.
Mahalo. Okay, I'm going to open it up for discussion with our council members. I know we've gone through your, the first round in committee, and great to see you here on the council day. So, council members, any discussion? Ms. Eoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Nani, for all of your community service and your willingness to serve on this commission. And yes, we've had many people say really great things about you, so I'm looking forward to working with you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff, Ms. Willie.
Yes, thank you, Nani, and for all your service, and including with the Good Shepherd Foundation and helping with getting the animals out of harm's way with the accroaching lava. And it's nice, will be nice to see a woman on the Game Management Commission. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Iligon, go right ahead.
Thank you. I haven't, I just wanted to say that the last person, the previous person in that position, I wanted to work more with the Game Management Commission, but I didn't really get a chance to have more of a good relationship. And I hope that I can have that with you, Ms. Pogline. And I hope that you can keep me informed of what's happening, and maybe we could work out some of the things on how to support the Game Management Commission. And I look forward to our meeting, and I wish you the very best in the Game Management Commission, and I do support your nomination. Thank you.
Mahalo, Mr. Iligon. Any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, next, we will go on to, we have a few police officers in Hilo, so I want to take those resolutions first. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 103-15.
Resolution 103-15 authorizes the Hawaii County Police Department to award funds to the Hawaii Island Economic Development Board, H.I.E.D.B. A grant in the amount of $150,000 would be used by the H.I.E.B.D. to supplement the construction of a police memorial for fallen officers at a site located at the Hilo Police Station. Reference Communication 167, introduced by Ms. Eoff, waived, F.C.
Ms. Eoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve Resolution 91-. Oh, I'm sorry.
103-15.
103-15.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff and seconded by Mr. Onishi. Ms. Eoff, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to strongly support this resolution, and I don't know if there's a police officer there in Hilo that wishes to comment. Oh, there is. Okay.
Good morning, Chair Kanuha, Vice Chair Poindexter, and county council members. This monument is a vision that Momi Casamaro, sister of one of our fallen brother officers, Ronald G. Chaco, who died in the line of duty in 1990. Momi had envisioned this memorial and has been working at it, at getting this started for many years, and the transfer of these funds will, will make this vision become a reality.
Thank you very much. And if you could let the council members in the future, let us know if there's any other way we can help support this, I'm sure we would be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Any other discussion on Resolution 103? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Resolution 106-15.
Resolution 106-15 creates two police officer, two positions for the Hawaii County Police Department. The positions would be under the department's community-oriented policing services hiring program and partially funded by a $250,000 grant from the United States Department of Justice. One position would be based at the Waimea Middle School and the other at Keau Middle School. Reference Communication 171, introduced by Ms. Eoff, waived, F.C.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Resolution 106-15.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff and seconded by Ms. David. Ms. Eoff, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that these school-based police officers are a great inspiration and help to students in the intermediate level. I think that the Community Policing Officer Program as a whole is a great program here on our island. And my understanding is that these two schools did not have community policing officers, whereas most of the middle schools around the island do. So, I'm wondering if Lieutenant Horio would like to comment.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, and members of the county council. Yes, currently, Waimea and Keau do not have a school resource officer. We have current six of them, two in Hilo, two in Kona, Hamakua, and Pohua, intermediate schools. So, this would definitely increase our ability to reach more children in the schools.
Thank you, sir. And as was stated, this is a U.S. Department of Justice grant, and our county is committed to continuing the funding after the, I think it's a three-year grant. Is that correct? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. I think Mr. Onishi was next, and then Mr. Chung.
Hi, Lieutenant Horio.
Good morning.
Hey, someone in Kohala Middle School had asked, or High School, had asked me about how they could go in getting a SRO for their school. I met them at the Keau Ho 3-on-3 basketball tournament in January, and because of the way Hipo is now being being, I guess, done through the department where your CPOs and your SROs are going to be the ones conducting the activities. So they were wondering how they could get, I guess, some, an officer there.
For, and this is what area?
Kohala High and Middle School.
I'm basically working with the commander of the district.
Okay.
And then, you know, whatever support the other community police off, they have a community police officer out there, and I don't know that the South Kohala officers sometimes help them. So it's basically coordinating it with the commanders and the community police officer in that area.
Okay, got it. I'll let them know. And then, so these two new positions that are going to be at the middle school, they'll be also helping out in doing activities for the HYPAL program, correct?
Um, that's correct, in the districts that they represent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Mr. Chung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I want to speak in favor of this, but I wanted to relate a story. When I served on the council many years ago, there was actually one or two council members who voted against, you know, these types of measures and the funding for these community or school policing officers. On some kind of philosophical grounds, I guess, you know, because of the intrusion of, you know, having law enforcement people in the schools. Quite frankly, I was incredulous, you know. It, it just baffles me why we shouldn't be supporting these types of efforts to make our schools more safe. And I think it's been proven that these things have made inroads in, in providing a safer learning environment for our students. So I just wanted to say that, and I believe that this council will unanimously support that, and I, I'm really encouraged by that. I just wanted to share that story. Thank you.
Mahalo, Mr. Chung. Ms. Willie?
Yeah, I echo what Mr. Chung said. But I also want to say it's not just safety, it's bridging the relationship to kids to trust law enforcement and learn how to work with them, and see them as part of our community and not separate from our community. So I really support this. I think it creates a different atmosphere in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Ilagon, did you have any comment, or you're all good?
Yes, I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. I, right off the bat, I just want to say I do support this. And I was actually looking into, when I was reviewing the budget for the police department, I was looking into how we could support this program even more. The, the program I'm referring to is the school resource officers. And one of the things that I asked my staff to do was to find out how many schools are there in the county of Hawaii. And they gave me a number, which is 40. And when I asked them, could you cluster up the schools to where they're within a mile? And to make sure that maybe there could be a school officer, a school resource officer in that, within that one mile. And that number came out to, I believe, 21 clusters. So that's how many, according to what we found, how many schools I feel is not served. And one of the things is, where are we going to find this funding? And I felt that it wasn't necessarily from the county of Hawaii. I was looking into try to lobby the state to get that funding. Because one of the things that I felt early on was that most of the time, students see police officers in the worst situation in their lives. And they have that image of a police officer at that point. I would like to see the police officers integrated with the schools, because then they get to interact with a police officer and get to know what that police officer, who he is, what that uniform means, instead of it being on a bad situation, a bad experience in their life. And I felt that was very important for me. And I'm actually looking into working some number to where we could lobby into the state and provide a school resource officer in each one of these campuses in this, in the county of Hawaii. And even in the other counties I was thinking about, and make this a statewide effort. Because we really need to be part of the public education system. And this is the greatest way to have that foot in the door and really take off with that program. So I'm, I, I'm very excited and supportive of what you're doing here, and I'm glad you found funding elsewhere. And I hope that in the future, I may be able to find funding for you and really get this program underway. So thank you for all that you do, and of course, the Finance Department, and the mayor, and the Police Department. Aloha.
Mahalo, Mr. Ilagon. Anybody else on first round? Ms. David?
Aloha, and welcome. I just have one question, and I really agree with what Council Member Ilagon is saying, that, that every school should have a program like this. And did you know if you have any C, S R C, SROs in the Kahua area?
Not currently. We have two community police officers in the Kahua area, and they helped to service the school.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with the Police Department on this. Thank you.
Mahalo, Ms. David. Mr. Onishi?
I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Ilagon was mentioning, and, you know, it's, and what Ms. Willie was mentioning. It's all in relationship, this bonding when you have this officer at the school. Like, for example, there was this one officer at Hilo Intermediate School. And, you know, if you have an officer that's an outgoing, that's really, you know, great with kids, they, they communicate with each other. So at times, they would have, like, illegal activities that was happening around that district. And the kids would come and report back to that officer and let him know that, you know what, so-and-so did that. And so they had this bond. And, and to me, you know, being in the HYPAL program too, that's what you need. You need this public relations. And so sometimes, maybe the department hopefully can change the philosophy, and putting maybe some other patrol officers into the schools to get that relationship. Because they're going to be the eyes and ears for the community, right? Because they're out there, they know what's going on. And so that's a thing that maybe we can start looking into, too, that having the department kind of change their philosophy. But, you know, I totally support you guys, Lieutenant Horio, and your group. Thank you.
Mahalo, Mr. Onishi. Council members, any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 106, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Yeah, mahalo. Mahalo for coming and explaining everything. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we're going to take another out-of-order Resolution 101 dash 15.
Resolution 101 dash 15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to the Anikona Ouli Kanehoa VFD Company for the development of an apparatus garage. Transfers appropriates $3,000 out and from the Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District Nine, and credit same to the Hawaii Fire Department Training and Volunteer Fire, Other Current Expenses, Building and Construction Materials Account, Anikona Ouli Kanehoa VFD Company. Funds would be used to develop an apparatus garage for storage and maintenance of vehicles and equipment to be used by the Hawaii Fire Department and its local volunteer company, Nine Bravo. Reference Communication 162, introduced by Ms. Willie.
Ms. Willie?
Motion to approve Resolution, what is it?
101.
101 dash 15.
Been moved by Ms. Willie and seconded by Mr. Onishi. Ms. Willie, you have the floor.
Okay. And I'd like to bring forward Guido Giacometti and Larry Gavin, the head of the volunteer, this unit of the volunteer fire department, and his deputy or vice. And I'm just, they, I mean, our area is definitely fire-prone and at risk. And the volunteers do a great deal, and this will enable them to have a storage unit or contribute to being able to have a storage unit in, in a critical area. So if I could just let them introduce themselves and maybe say a few words about your company. State your name at the beginning.
Oh, thank you, Councilman, Councilperson Willie, and members of the council. I'm Guido Giacometti. I'm a resident of Anikona Subdivision. To my left is Larry Gavin. He's also a resident of the same area. As Ms. Willie has put, we have a very risky situation with respect to wildfires. And the AOK or Anikona Uli Kanehoa Group is a nonprofit that is supporting Nine Bravo, which is our local fire company. We've purchased and donated to the county for Nine Bravo's use, a five-ton off-road tanker, which happens to be the largest tanker that can go down following a bulldozer in a wildfire. AOK is currently involved in a project which includes many local and island residents and companies that have donated time and effort, services, and even supplies and equipment towards this project. So I want to recognize those people. Thank you.
Was he going to say something? I'm, I'm assuming the chair, because Mr. Canoa just stepped away for a moment. So are you done? Okay. Is there any other questions or comments for them?
Just, just.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Eoff?
Just thank you, and I thank all the volunteer firefighters.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, do, any other discussion? Did you have something else to say? No? Okay. So all those in favor of Resolution 101 dash 15, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, so Resolution 101 15 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, did we have any other ones that, oh, here, he is back. I will relinquish the chair.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Any other discussion? Oh, okay. Next, Mr. Ilagon?
I would like to have three bills out of order.
Okay, let me, let me come back to you. I have two more resolutions, and then I can come back to you, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Ilagon, for the notification. On next one, we have Mr. Clerk, Resolution 109.
Resolution 109 dash 15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to Kalani Honua to purchase supplies and equipment for a grocery market that will service the District of Puna and the community at large. Transfers appropriates $10,000 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District Five, and credit same to the Department of Research and Development, Hawaii County Resource Center, Miscellaneous Contract Services Account, Kalani Honua Grocery Market. Funds would be used to assist in the launch of a new grocery market that would provide local produce from area farmers and bulk products. Reference Communication 175, introduced by Mr. Paleka.
Mr. Paleka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could call Mr. LJ Bates.
You want to make a motion to approve?
Can I move?
Approve 109.
Approve 109.
Been moved by Mr. Paleka and seconded by Mr. Onishi. And Mr. Paleka, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we wanted to move ahead with this resolution. Unfortunately, I believe we have some minor things we have to take care with in terms of the Planning Department and a special use permit. But I wanted, wanted to allow Mr. Bates an opportunity to speak regarding what this market, really, it's a co-op. I'll, I'll let LJ explain.
Thank you. Aloha, and thank you for having me. I'm excited to tell you about the market at Kalani. This has been a long time coming. And Lower Puna, Puna Makai, is designated and termed what is called a food desert, because it takes more than 10 miles to get to any of the basic supplies. A round trip average is about 36 miles to go and get milk and bread. And this became apparent during Hurricane Azel, when Kalani was the only source of any food, water and ice included, for that entire area. And while we felt wonderful serving our neighbors, that came with an enormous price tag. And we served thousands of meals before we had any support down there for our families. And we did that out of our own stores, out of our own storage. And our capacity to do so on an ongoing basis is just not there. And so our community has asked us over and over and over is to do a market, so that we can bring local produce to the table, as well as the basic staples. Now, Councilman Ilagon last year had given us a $10,000 grant to bring together farmers and local people to learn about permaculture design. And what that has evolved into is a true measurement of the capacity for Lower Puna to be sustainable. And we have a lot of challenges there, and we have a lot of transition to make in order to be sustainable. And so this market is an effort to help with that transition. It'll eliminate more than an hour of traffic in and out of Pahoa for the basic supplies. And it'll allow for a market that brings together truly local vendors, as well as products from our own permaculture and agricultural operation. So we're excited to be able to offer it to our community. It's a vital need, especially in what's called a food desert. And my request today is that we don't pull this from the table pending the Planning Department, because we have spent thousands of dollars proving that our permit is certainly sufficed for this kind of expansion into what we already have as a market. And so my hope is that we can move forward and just call it pending the Planning Department's approval, because we're very confident that we'll get that.
Mr. Chair, let me call Bob Command from. Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
I was wondering, so are there major issues, or can we get through the?
Bobby Command, Deputy Planning Director, this is strictly a question about process. We, I guess, are in disagreement that your permit can't allow this. Needs a special permit. He's in the agricultural district. Unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, but he, the, the permit is for 45 acres, the application? It's for more than 15 acres. That's out of our hands. That needs to go to the State Land Use Commission. We've talked, we talked before the meeting today, and we're working with Kalani, and we support their, their efforts. We want to do everything we can to make this happen. It's just, it's, just feel uncomfortable about letting this go forward at this point.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I don't want to withdraw this, but I was wondering if I could postpone this to the call of the chair, keep it alive, so as soon as we get the matters taken care of?
Are you, did you want to make a motion now, or did you want to allow other council members?
Let other council members.
I think that's a great idea, if you want to keep it on the table for pending. But I'll let the, I'll open it up to other council members if they would like a chance to. Ms. Willie?
Yeah, just, I'm very supportive of this, and hopefully we can climb through that little maze of loopholes. And I would certainly support fellow council member in postponing or whatever he needs to do.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Chung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I wanted to say how enthusiastic Mr. Paleka is of, of your, your program over there. You know, he's been telling, you know, he's been giving high praise, you know, to each of the council members at separate times, of course. But, you know, maybe if Mr. Paleka, or Bobby, or you could further elaborate on what the problem is, so I can fully understand what the hangup is on this. And, you know, I, I think Bobby or Danny, you guys And, you know, I think Bobby or Danny, you guys have to start from square one on this, because I don't completely understand what the problem is. And I just want to know, so that we can possibly try to troubleshoot it. Okay?
I'd be happy to share my perspective.
Sure.
So I came into leadership at Kalani in 2012, and it was at the tail end of our special use permit, which was then extended. And so we are now in the process of, we first tried to extend our special use permits, but because Kalani Honua has evolved to serve so much of our community in so many different ways, we've also expanded our campus, which is now 120 acres. And so rather than doing special use permits, which only equate to 15 acres, we've been guided by the Planning Department to initiate a land use commission application with the state. And so with the Planning Department's support and help and truly amazing guidance, we have gotten this land use commission to the point where we're ready to submit. And so the other permit that is in place right now is in extension form, and that's the challenge, I believe, today. And so we've gone through HRS 205 line by line, Hawaii Revia statutes, to make sure that we are still in compliance with this new initiative, and we feel very comfortable that we are. But we went to the Planning Department out of respect and said, "We don't want to do this without talking to you," and I guess we have not come to a conclusion where I thought we did.
Right. So that's a land use issue, right?
If I may just add one more thing, from the Planning Department's perspective, they have an expired use special permit. That's the crux of the issue.
Oh, okay. Are you a nonprofit organization?
Yes, we are.
And would... Are land use issues, and I'm not... You guys are trying to resolve the land use issue, right, with the help of the Planning Department?
Correct.
It's just not resolved right now. And of course, as we all know, when you go to the land use commission, it's going to take some time, right? But is or are land use issues part of the criteria for us giving monies to nonprofits? And I'm not asking you, I'm asking either Bobby or... And, you know, I can take a look later, but I know what the issue is, anyway. It's a land use issue, right? And the administration right now is somewhat reluctant to allow this until we have a better handle on it.
And I think that you hit the nail on the head. We're not exactly sure, either. I think there was a discussion with Corp. Counsel, and, you know, we're still uncomfortable with the answer. It would seem best for us to clear that up before we proceeded, in the Planning Department's opinion.
Okay. But is there any question on the part of anyone whether Kalani Honua provides a much-needed service to the Lower Puna area? None whatsoever, right?
None, and we support everything that they're trying to accomplish, it's just procedural.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Ms. David?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Iligon, I'll come to you next, okay?
Thank you.
Good morning. The extension you mentioned, is that to extend the special use permit? What is expiring? I heard you mention that something was expiring.
I believe the special permit that they have has expired. They're applying for an extension to that.
Extension for the special permit for the 15 acres? The special permit is for them to do what function right now?
I'm not exactly sure.
Yes, please.
We have three special permits at the moment.
Okay.
All three of which cover 45 of our 120 acres. In our expansion, we've been guided to move towards a state LUC rather than doing several special use permits. And so during, when that happened, and we realized we need to go to the state, that was in 2012, as our permits were expiring. And so we've been doing an annual report to Planning Department on the existing permits. I have never heard the word "expired," but I understood them to be extended. And so we're just working on that basis, so that we can move forward with the land use commission and get this off the Planning Department plate. I will say that the project we're talking about does not change the footprint of the building that the Planning Department has already approved, or any of the special requirements for that facility. The renovations are minimal at best.
So Deputy Director, then, in the interim, while they address the LUC issues, then, would this organization be able to continue with an extension until that's resolved, from the Planning Department's perspective?
I think that's the question that we are uncomfortable with.
I'm just trying to figure out what the, you know, what the solution could be, or whether...
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Well, thank you for trying, because...
I think, well, I know we can get through this, it's just, we need to, we need to spend a little more time.
I just needed to understand what the whole procedure was, and what's expired, or, you know, what's being extended or being requested for an extension. Thank you.
I do want to say that the Planning Department has been incredible throughout this entire process in supporting Kalani's operation to continue, although we've been in this gray area after the permits have expired. And I have to thank Bobby and everyone, Jeff, Darren, and Director Kanuha, for supporting what we're doing. This is one more speed bump in our path, and I would hate for a speed bump to prevent this vital service to the people of Puna Makai. And that's our goal here. So I want to thank you and hope that we can move forward.
Thank you.
And I... Oh, I'm sorry. And I totally support the effort, and I would support a postponement. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Iligon.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to chime in into the discussion. And I, every, hearing from the council members, it sounds like they support what Kalani Honua is doing. And I agree that it's very hard to support a program that's going to be counterproductive in the sense of, there's some technical things that need to be discussed and resolved regarding the permitting. Now, I also wanted to support and give some money to Kalani Honua. However, I don't have any money this fiscal year. But next fiscal year, I plan to write out a contingency fund and also give money to Kalani Honua to start up this market. And the reason why this market is so necessary is because, right now, I actually did a Google map, and it's 30 miles away to Pahoa Town. And it's around, actually, 14 miles and 30-minute drive. And there's no, the closest market is Pahoa Town, and there's nothing around Kalapana area and where Kalani Honua is at. And there's residents that lives in that area. And to have this market would really help out the community there. And most importantly, at the time of disaster, Kalani Honua was the hub of providing and distributing food and water and resources to the community around that area. And I really, really want to support them, and I want to support Councilmember Paleka's postponement. And once the technical part has been resolved, I feel like we can really move on. I mean, we can definitely push this reso through, but I feel that we have to also respect the process. And at the same time, it might not be a requirement for a contingency fund, but I feel like sometime going above and beyond and making sure everything is in line before handing out any county funds, taxpayer money, to a nonprofit, I feel like we're doing our due diligence. So I want to support the postponement. And at the same time, I also want to say that, once the permitting and everything is good, I hope that next year, I am able to write contingency fund for Kalani Honua to make sure that this market does happen for the District of Puna. And this is not within my district, but this is in Councilmember Paleka's district. And I feel like what happens in District Five affects District Four, and it's the overall well-being of the Puna community. And I just want to really voice out my support for Kalani, and make sure that we are doing our process, we're doing our due diligence, and at the same time, not being able to give this money right now, it's not a bad thing. But I know we are, if, I know everything will be resolved in the future, then we can give that money, and we can be rest assured that we did our job. So, thank you.
Mahalo, Mr. Iligon. I want to give it back to Mr. Paleka.
Mr. Chair, can we, I think I'd just like to follow through with the motion to postpone. So I'm going to work with Bobby, Planning Department, and LJ, and I saw Molly over there to just make sure if we can go ahead in regards, and don't need the permits in place, then I'm going to ask immediately, we call it off the table. But at this point, I want to move forward and postpone.
The motion on the floor is to postpone to the call of the chair, and seconded by Mr. Point Dexter. Ms. Point Dexter, any discussion? Mr. Chung?
Yes. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Before we leave this issue, and first of all, I believe that postponing is the right thing to do, because that's a big amount of Mr. Paleka's district allocation we're talking about, and we wouldn't want that to be lost because of some technicality, he could use it other places, but hopefully it's with your program. But I don't want to leave this until we know precisely who's going to make the decision on this thing. We know what the issues are, we know what the hang-ups are, but who's going to make the call? Is it the mayor? Is it Corp. Counsel? Is it... Who's going to make the call?
I'd like to defer to Corp. Counsel on that one.
Good morning, Chair Kanuha, members of the County Council, Molly Stebbins, Corporation Council. You know, my understanding is that part of the issue is a question of whether the proposed use, the grocery market, would actually be consistent with the existing special permit. And I actually wasn't aware of there being issues with the current permit having expired and a request for an extension. I don't know all the details of that, but I think more of the issue that needs to be resolved is amending the special permit to allow for this particular use, a grocery market. So, you know, it seems like there, as far as the process for that...
Can I just, a point of order?
Yes.
We're on the, I thought the motion that we're discussing is on the postponement.
Yes. The motion, the, what's on the floor right now is a motion to postpone, and the subject matter has to be on that postponement, and the council members just want to make sure that when it is postponed, certain things need to happen, so that we can, so this postponement can move forward. So, Ms. Stebbins, if you can just keep it to the motion to postpone and what needs to happen, so that when this postponement happens, certain things need to get done, so that we can move forward.
Sure. Yeah. Well, my understanding is that Kalani Honua is working with the Planning Department and the LUC to resolve the issues they have with their existing permit and make sure that this type of activity would be allowed. So, in answer, I guess, to Mr. Chung's question, no, it's not Corp. Counsel or the mayor's call, it's, the organization will be working that out with the LUC, and I don't know if it also goes to the Planning Commission. Like I said, I don't know all the details.
Mr. Chairman, do I still have the floor?
Yes.
And I'll keep it very brief, because this is what troubles me on this, and it relates to the postponement. We still haven't gotten a clear idea as to where Mr. Paleka or Mr. Iligon have to go to try to work this thing out with the administration. I think, from what I can tell, it's the Planning Department that's voicing their concerns about this, but I don't think that's where it ends. I think it's probably with either the mayor or the R&amp;D Department, because they can probably overlook the land use problem. Because if we're going to wait for the LUC to make a decision, then we may as well just scrap this already. That's it. Because it's going to take some, at least six months for them to resolve this on the low end. So, nobody's really given me a clear answer, and that's okay. I'll still vote for the postponement, but maybe Mr. Paleka and Mr. Iligon have to go work with the mayor really quickly on this one. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Mr. Paleka?
From my point of view, I'm thinking more with the amendment to the, and if the extension is granted with the special use permit, that that would be, that would allow us to go forward, so long they have a valid special use permit. I think that's the main question here, and that's my understanding, having a special use permit for my operations. But I'm hoping that, but like you said, Mr. Chung, it's not very clear.
Thank you, Ms. Sir. Paleka, real quickly, Ms. Willie on the postponement.
On the postponement, because right now, I'm opposing the postponement. I mean, I want to know from Molly, if we give this vote in favor of this money and allow this to be held, is there any issue in terms of lapsing? And then it's there, and let's just say, everybody opposes, nobody will do it, and it has to even wait for the commission. I mean, will those funds lapse? I mean, I think the first issue is whether we have to, you know, where the land use issue comes into play. But if it really isn't an ag use with a use permit, then it means, you know, you're not going to be able to get it approved. Now, it may be that you could change the resolution and be dealing with something other on that land development in 15 acres, I don't know, that would, that wouldn't be focused on something that would be out of sync with an extension. But I guess my question is, can we support the money and not do the postponement and allow that funds to be held? I know I've had funds held for various things, whether it has to do, you know, whatever. But once it's in there, can it be, then it is dedicated, they know they will get it at some point? So, Ms. Stebbins, can I just ask you?
Just real quickly, Ms. Willie, would that be a question for Ms. Stebbins or Deanna Sacco, Finance Director, about the appropriation?
Whichever, whoever can answer it, because it'll decide how I'm going to vote on this.
Well, I would not recommend passing this resolution and appropriating the funds for a use that, as it currently stands, is not permitted on the subject property. I would have to defer to Deanna Sacco. I don't know if she's still around as far as what would happen exactly with the funds if you were to pass the resolution, and if they would then lapse if they weren't used for this purpose. But, you know, I do have to advise against passing this resolution, since the proposed use isn't permitted at this time.
So I yield, that answers my question.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Iligon?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate Councilmember Chung's trying to clarify the issue at hand right this time. And I feel like we will really find our answers talking to Kalani Honua, the Planning Department, Corporation Council, and getting everybody on the same table, and really hash out the issue. And regarding Councilmember Willie, I really urge you to support this postponement, because it's really hard to allocate funding, and then all of a sudden, we can't even do the market. Councilmember Paleka, and I can't speak on behalf of Councilmember Paleka, but I can assume that the fact that he put up this contingency fund, he would like to see this happen. And myself, I would like to see this happen. So we have to work some things out with the different departments and make sure every, make sure to check that checklist. And I just want to urge all the council members to support this postponement, and let's, you will know that we will be doing our job and talking to the necessary departments to make sure that this works out. We will do it in our best of our ability. I just want to... I just want to ask for your support to bear with us. We wanna see this happen, but we don't wanna do, set a wrong foundation in the beginning. And this is the beginning, and we wanna set that strong foundation at the start. So, please support the postponement, and let's move on to, um, let's move on with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ilagon. Okay, on the postponement, just real quickly, Mr. Command.
Just, just to answer, uh, Councilman Chung's question, at the most basic level, if we're dealing with a permit, a special permit that's less than 15 acres, it's our decision. If it's more, it's the Land Use Commission's decision. I don't know if that helps, but.
Thank, Mr. Command, we're on the postponement. That goes into detail about the actual resolution itself, and I don't wanna go into, um, continuing that discussion. So, on the postponement, I wanna cut off debate and let's move forward on this. I think we all understand the issues at hand, and, uh, we need to work together in the back so that we can get this settled. Uh, Mr. Clerk, on the post, on the motion to postpone to the call of the chair.
Mr. Chung. Ms. David.
I apologize. We'll do a, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of the postponement to the call of the chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Uh, thank you all. And thank you, Mr. Paleka. Okay, next, Mr. Clerk, uh, another out, or next we can do 110, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Ilagon. Resolution 110.
Resolution 110 dash 15, transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to the Divine Mercy Family Foundation to establish a gong football sports club in Puna. Transfers appropriates $5,000 out and from the Clerk Council Services contingency relief account, Council District Five, and credit same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Administration, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services account, Divine Mercy Family Foundation. Funds would be used to pay for supplies, equipment, promotional materials, and instructor fees. Reference Communication 176, introduced by Mr. Paleka.
Mr. Paleka.
A motion to approve Resolution 110.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Paleka and seconded by Ms. David. Mr. Paleka, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, is Steve Martin still in Pohua?
Yes, I am.
Hey, Steve.
Hey, how's it?
I guess one of the questions that I know we have here is, uh, can you give them a brief description of what gong football is?
Yes, uh, thank you for asking the question. Sorry about questioning and, uh, earlier. But, um, gong football is a actual athletic program that mixes in indigenous games, like games from around the world, and then contemporary games as well. So, tag football, ultimate frisbee soccer. You play all these games actually in one. The good thing about the program is it's been operational since 2012, working with high schools like Honaka'ah, Kohala, Ka'ou, Waikia, and, uh, La Po'ihoi'oi' actually. So, one of the things that we're trying to do to break to Pohua is the current Recreation Director, since I've worked with him in the past at Parks and Recreation, would like to start a club, and that's what we're going on today, on. So, what we'd like to do is provide this to the children in Pohua, which is actually connect them to the other activities that we have on the island. Like I said, I'm working with these different schools. And this is gonna give them the opportunity not only to learn this program, but then also in the overall, um, view of what we're trying to do, connect it into something more. So, I can also ask more questions, but where do we go?
Are you, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Paleka. Any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's nine ayes, motion passes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna take a brief recess, uh, council members, a brief recess for five, 10 minutes. Thank you, recess. Council members, I'm gonna come out of recess. And, uh, Mr. Ilagon will be back shortly, but since he's not here, I'll go on to Resolution 108 dash 15.
Resolution 108 dash 15, grants a variance from Chapter Three, Section Three dash 12A, Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition, as amended to allow one directory sign on 45 dash 547 Plumeria Street, Honaka'ah, Hawaii 96727, tax map key 4 dash 5 dash 010, colon 091, zoned A dash 1A and A dash 40A, Agricultural District. The applicant, University of Hawaii at Hilo, North Hawaii Education and Research Center, requests a signed variance for one ground sign to be placed at the corner of Plumeria and Lehuah Streets in Honaka'ah. Reference Communication 174, introduced by Ms. Pointe Dexter, wave PWP RC.
Ms. Pointe Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 108 dash 15.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Pointe Dexter and seconded by Mr. Paleka. Ms. Pointe Dexter, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm just, um, asking that you support this, and I've been down there in that area. And it is, um, the hill is pretty high when you're passing. If it was a small sign, you wouldn't be able to even see it. And I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with that area as well, but I'm just asking for support. And if we have any questions, Mr. Neil Erickson is here. And I think Farah is still there from North Hawaii Education Research Center at the Waimea Office, if anyone has questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pointe Dexter. Uh, council members, are there any questions or discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
That's nine ayes, motion passes. Uh, mahalo. Okay, uh, Mr. Ilagon, you have the next, uh, go right ahead, Mr. Ilagon.
Thank you. I would like to make a request to take Bill 282, 283, and 291 out of order.
Okay, we can most certainly do that. Mr. Clerk, uh, Order of the Day, Second Reading, Bill 282.
Bill 282, 2012, 2014, amends Chapter 25, Article Three, Section 25 dash three dash two, Article Four, Section 24 dash four dash 59.2, and Article Seven of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition, as amended relating to the establishment of a special district to be known as the Pohua Village Design, PVD, District, to include adopted design guidelines and a design review committee, and providing an exception to off-street parking and loading requirements for said special district. Planning Director initiated. The Windward Planning Commission forwards its favorable recommendation for this amendment to the zoning code, which provides, which provides a process for community review of project applications and plan, and to provide district requirements for off-street parking and loading in the proposed PVD District. Reference Communication 1027, introduced by Mr. Kern by request, First Reading, March 4th, 2015.
Mr. Ilagon.
I move to approve 282, uh, Bill 282.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ilagon and seconded by Mr. Paleka. Mr. Ilagon, you have the floor, if you want it.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, I wanted to mention that I had a discussion with the Planning Department. And due to the fact that last council meeting, we passed a rule, um, a code change to the PUD. And there are language referencing the PUD that needs to be changed to, um, to really make sure the language are all in sync. However, I'm not sure exactly if the mayor had signed the PUD ordinance as of late. And we're still working on the language on, um, on making sure that we got the exact language with the PUD and this language. So, if the council members don't mind, this is not to delay the process, but this is actually to make sure that the language, um, is in sync with the current language with the PUD that we approved last council meeting. And I discussed this with the Planning Department, and, um, they feel like this would be a, a right step also. If, um, after the first round of discussion, I would like to make a postponement, um, to the next council meeting in April 1st on the second round of discussion. Thank you.
Uh, mahalo, Mr. Ilagon. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, council members, any discussion? Okay, uh, Mr. Ilagon, you wanna make a motion to postpone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to postpone Bill 282 to the next council meeting on April 1st.
May I have a second? It's been moved by Mr. Uh, Ilagon and seconded by Ms. Pointe Dexter to postpone Bill 282 to our council meeting on April 1st. Is there any discussion on the postponement? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Ilagon. Uh, Mr. Clerk, Bill 283.
Bill 283, 2012, 2014, amends Chapter 25, Article Two, Division Seven, and Article Six, Division One of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition, as amended relating to review of development projects proposed within a special district. Planning Director initiated. The Windward and Leeward Planning Commissions forward their favorable recommendation for this amendment to the zoning code, which would create a process within the zoning code that requires the Planning Director to review and consult with a local design review committee for certain land use permit applications situated within a special district to promote consistency with applicable adopted design guidelines and/or standards. Reference Communication 1028, introduced by Mr. Kern by request, First Reading, March 4th, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Ilagon.
I move to approve Bill 283.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ilagon and seconded by Mr. Paleka. Mr. Ilagon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna say thank you, council members, for your postponement. And as I said previously on Bill 282, is that this is to make sure that the language on the PUD on these bills matches with the PUD new code that we approved last council meeting. So, again, I wanna say thank you for your cooperation. And at this time, I would like to make a motion to postpone Bill 283 to the next council meeting on April 1st, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Ilagon. Oh, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ilagon and seconded by Mr. Paleka to postpone Bill 283 to the council meeting on April 1st. Is there any discussion on the postponement? Hearing or, oh, Mr. Paleka.
Yeah, I just, um, and I'd like to echo what, um, Councilmember Ilagon said, especially under Section Six. It does specifically, uh, refer to application for PUD permit. So, just to keep our, the language consistent with the recent passage of the PUD bill. I think we need to look, look over it, this is quickly, and get it remedied and move ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Paleka. Any other discussion on the postponement? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's nine ayes, uh, motion passes to postpone Bill 283 to April 1st. Uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, Bill 291.
Bill 291, 2012, 2014, amends Chapter Three of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition, as amended relating to regulation of signs in the Pohua Village Design District. Since forth, the requirements for procedures for obtaining a permit for signage within the Pohua Village Design District also establishes the review process for sign permit applications. Reference Communication 1044, introduced by Mr. Kern by request, First Reading, March 4th, 2015.
Mr. Ilagon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Bill 291.
Check it.
Been moved by Mr. Ilagon and seconded by Mr. Paleka. Mr. Ilagon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I previously stated on Bill 282 and Bill 283, I would like to make a motion to postpone Bill 291 to the next council meeting on April 1st, 2015.
It's been moved by Mr. Ilagon and seconded by Mr. Onishi to postpone Bill 291 to April 1st council meeting. Is there any discussion on the postponement? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's nine ayes, motion passes to postpone Bill 291 to April 1st. Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, we have the applicant here for Bill 25. Uh, I think I wanna just do that real quickly. So, uh, bills for ordinance is First Reading, Bill 25.
Bill 25, amends Section 25 dash eight dash 11, Lalamilo Pu'u Kapu Zone Map, Article Eight, Chapter 25, Zoning Code of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition, by changing the district classification from agricultural one acre, A dash 1A, to single-family residential 20,000 square feet, RS dash 20 at the Waimea Homestead, South Kohala, Hawaii, covered by tax map key 6 dash 5 dash 011, colon 030. Applicant Robert Hein III and Margaret Hein, area 0.813 acre. The Leeward Planning Commission forwards its favorable recommendation for the change of zone, which would allow the applicants to create a parcel that would be given to their daughter to build a residence. Reference Communication 123, introduced by Mr. Ilagon, approve PC 13.
Mr. Ilagon.
I move to approve Bill 25.
Yeah, it's been moved by Mr. Ilagon and seconded by Mr. Paleka. Uh, Mr. Ilagon, you have the floor. I just wanted to mention to you that, again, we have the applicant here in Kona, if you had any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm gonna yield at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ilagon. Is there any discussion from council members? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Uh, mahalo for waiting. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we're gonna just go to the top of the agenda and go... Yeah, Ken's not here. We're gonna go to the top of the agenda, Resolution 91 dash 15.
Resolution 91 dash 15, accepts the negotiated lease agreement for Hamakoa lands identified as tax map keys 4 dash 3 dash 009, colon 055, comma 056, comma 057, and 058, which Crown Pacific International LLC pursuant to Section 2 dash 114 of the Hawaii County Code. Resolution 38 dash 11 authorizes the lease of certain county of Hawaii-owned lands and required that the negotiated lease agreement for those lands be accepted by the County Council. The above parcels consist of 66.416 acres and would be leased for 10 years at $3,320.80 per year, with an option of two additional 10-year terms. Reference Communication 135, introduced by Ms. Eoff, approve FC dash 9.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Resolution 91 dash 15.
May I have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Eoff and seconded by Ms. David. Uh, Ms. Eoff, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I believe that we did hear from, um, Corporation Council and Mr. Ventura at committee meetings. And, um, I don't know if anybody is in Hilo today, but I don't have any further comments. I think, um, this was self-explanatory.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Is there any other discussion on Resolution 91? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Resolution 95.
Resolution 95 dash 15, transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credit same to a designated fund account for the Cruise Paradise 2015. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out and from Clerk Council Services contingency relief account, Council District One, and credits the same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Culture, Arts, other current expenses, miscellaneous contract services account, Cruise Paradise 2015. Funds would be used to pay for festivity costs associated with the 10-day car event to be held June 25th to July 5th, 2015. Communication 149, introduced by Ms. Pointe Dexter.
Ms. Pointe Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 95 dash 15.
Been moved by Ms. Pointe Dexter and seconded by Ms. Eoff. Ms. Pointe Dexter.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask for your support. I think-
Yeah, I'd just like to ask for your support. I think the reso is self-explanatory and they're coming to Honaka, so it's giving, um, Honaka an economic boost there. Ask for your support. Aloha.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Uh, Mr. Clerk, Resolution 96-15.
Resolution 96-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to purchase a commercial stove for the Kohala Intergenerational Building. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District 9, and credits same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Elderly Activities Division, Recreation Equipment, Miscellaneous Equipment Account, Kohala Intergenerational Building Commercial Stove. Reference Communication 150, introduced by Ms. Willie.
Ms. Willie.
Yes. Um, motion to pass Resolution 96-15.
It's been moved by Ms. Willie and seconded by Mr. Onishi. Ms. Willie, you have the floor.
Okay, so this is the intergenerational building, which is really used for community meetings and all kinds of events there. And, um, the whole stove fixtures in that area are beyond repair, so this will, um, allow them to again have a kitchen in that location. So, I urge your support.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Is there any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 97-15.
Resolution 97-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to improve and expand the Kona Skate Park. Transfers appropriates $25,000 out and from the Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District 7, and credits same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, transfer to Capital Project Fund Account, Discretionary Projects, Council District 7, Kona Skate Park. Reference Communication 158, introduced by Mr. Kanuha.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Resolution 97-15.
May I have a second? It's been moved by Ms. Eoff and seconded by Mr. Onishi. Is there any discussion? Um, briefly, I, I just wanted to say, I, asking for your, all of your support on this, uh... Ms. Eoff also has a sister resolution to support the Kona Skate Park. This is a much-needed thing for our Keiki in Kona. Uh, I know there's a few that's been going up around the island, Waimea or Waikoloa, Honaka. So, this will take the kids off the streets and have them in a, a safer environment that they can all recreate and do their thing. And so, I urge all of your support and thank you, Mr. Van Bergen, for your help. I know, can you just briefly, sorry, I don't want to take too much of the council's time on this, but just briefly, um, go over the first stages of this skate park or what's happening at Makaiel and how this money will help that, uh, skate park.
Ken Van Bergen, Deputy Director, Parks and Rec. First of all, I want to thank, uh, both you and, and Councilwoman Eoff for your contingency funds. It's very well needed, uh, very much needed. So, the Kailua Skate Park, at this point, um, we're in design stage and we're gonna do a similar project to what we did in Honaka and Waikoloa, which is to work with a nonprofit. Uh, it will supply the materials and then volunteers, the nonprofit will raise a revenue to play for labor. And it's been a very successful model. It's helped us leverage the efforts of the community. And we have a very strong team helping us with the Kailua Skate Park. More Than Sport is a nonprofit that stepped up to, to do fundraising. Um, Shane Dorian's also gonna help with fundraising. Um, and then Brian Sandlin, um, is helping us with the design and he worked on the Waikoloa and the Honaka. So, you know, skate parks, um, like you said, are very important. It keeps kids off the street. Honaka one is a very successful skate park. Um, Kohala, we're looking to expand that skate park in the future. Wa, Hilo needs a skate park, so this is one of several that we're looking at. But this one's very important for the Kona community. It's also very important aesthetically because it's right at the entrance of our brand-new park. So, you know, we're gonna put 20-plus million into Makaiel Park. You want to have a nice entrance in this skate park. It's one of the first things you're gonna see. So, we're gonna make sure it comes out, you know, real nice. And your contingency funds go a long way in helping us achieve that.
Thank, thank you, Ken. And I just wanted to say that this, this area, Old Airport or Makaiel, is, it borders, um, Ms. Councilmember Eoff's district and my district. So, that's why, that's the reason for, um, us working together and it serves pretty much the whole Kona community. So, um, I also like to thank Ms. Eoff for her support of the park, for many of the projects that have been happening down there. But I'll also thank you, Ken, and I think, Mr. Onishi, you had a question?
Um, yeah, you mentioned that Hilo doesn't have one and they're in dire need to have one with all those, um, kids skating out there on the streets. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna need your help in trying to organize something to get, like, at least a temporary skate park in Hilo. And I have certain locations that I want, you know, to have in mind, so I'll get back to you. Okay.
And any contingency money is very much appreciated. You can send our way.
And then, like, I noticed, like, so basically you guys are gonna need some funding too, so I'll make sure that some of the district council members around there can help support that project too.
Look forward to that discussion because it's very much needed, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Onishi, for your support of the Kona Skate Park.
Oh, yeah, and I also support the Kona Skate Park. That's, that's the motto that I'm gonna use.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Okay, any other discussion, council members? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Uh, thank you all. Uh, Mr. Clerk, Resolution 98-15.
Resolution 98-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to expand and improve the Kailua Skate Park. Transfers appropriates $25,000 out and from the Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District 8, and credits same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, transfer to Capital Project Fund Account, Discretionary Projects, Council District 7, Kailua Skate Park. Reference Communication 159, introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Uh, Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Resolution 98.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff and seconded by Ms. David. Uh, Ms. Eoff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Kanuha, and I think we've, um, just heard all of the, um, good things about the efforts to make this skate park, um, happen. And I just wanted to say thank you to you and to, um, Parks and Rec and all those community volunteers who are, um, making this a priority now. So, I'm sure the kids are gonna be really happy.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Uh, any other discussion? Mr. Onishi.
Yes, I also support this and Councilmember Chung, we could maybe do a partnership like that too, yeah? So, we can look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. I think, Mr. Iligan, you had something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do also support, uh, um, Kona Skate Park. And I just want to plant a seed in everybody's, um, minds. What if we create some sort of tournament in the sense of Kona Skate Park, Hilo, Puna, and have this as a department, um, county tournament for the Keiki? Just an idea.
Thank you, Mr. Iligan, for, um, your comment. Uh, any other discussion? And, and Mr. Onishi wanted to mention that, uh, the, the tournament would be amazing if Hilo had a skate park as well, so, uh, any other discussion on Resolution 98-15? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Mahalo, council members. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Resolution 99-15.
Resolution 99-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account for transportation expenses for the North Kohala Senior Program. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District 9, and credits same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Elderly Activities Division, Recreational, Other Current Expenses, Miscellaneous Contract Services Account, North Kohala Seniors Transportation. Funds would be used to pay for transportation expenses for three excursions. Reference Communication 160, introduced by Ms. Willie.
Ms. Willie.
Yes. Um, motion to approve Resolution 99-15.
It's been moved by Ms. Willie and seconded by Mr. Onishi. Ms. Willie, you have the floor.
Um, yeah, so just, uh, the several members of the senior club who came here and stressed, um, that it's really nice when they can get out and take trips outside of, um, uh, North Kohala and the cost for those transportations have gone way up. So, um, I'm happy to help and urge your support.
Mahalo, Ms. Willie. Any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 100-15.
Resolution 100-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to repair the air conditioner at the North Kohala Senior Center. Transfers appropriates $2,000 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District 9, and credits the same to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Elderly Activities Division, Recreation, Other Current Expenses, Equipment Repairs, Maintenance Account, North Kohala Senior Center Air Conditioner. Reference Communication 161, introduced by Ms. Willie.
Ms. Willie.
Yes, motion to approve Resolution 100-15.
It's been moved by Ms. Willie and seconded by Mr. Palaika. Ms. Willie, you have the floor.
Yeah, this is, um, the Bank of Hawaii gave to the seniors, um, their old bank building and that's where we're allowed to do, um, uh, it's under Elderly Services. The building is run by Parks and Rec, um, but the air conditioner broke and, um, so this would allow that because, um, during the last past summer, it was very difficult and people didn't want to stay. Um, it's very closed, um, airtight building, so that's what that's for. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Willie. Is there any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Mr. Clerk? We did Resolution 101. Resolution 102-15.
Resolution 102-15 approves participation by the Hawaii State Association of Counties in the National Association of Counties NACO Dental Program. Requires approval of the marketing agreement, Exhibit B, of HSAAC's member counties. NACO would provide a dental discount card for member counties and state association of counties to offer to residents. Reference Communication 165, introduced by Ms. Point Dexter, WAVE GRE DC.
Ms. Point Dexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 102-15.
Check it.
It's been moved by Ms. Point Dexter and seconded by Mr. Palaika. Ms. Point Dexter, you have the floor.
First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Fresh Onishi, who's with ASAC and supporting my membership on that Health Steering Committee because, um, a lot of great things are happening, um, here in the county, especially being just designated in the Blue Zone. So, all of this is kind of like all fitting in. So, basically, um, it's self-explanatory and I think you all have the, um, the pamphlet that came from NACO that I handed out to all of you and the information that is needed, so I ask you for your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Point Dexter. Is there any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Oh, sorry, Mr. Iligan, before we take the vote.
I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Point Dexter for bringing this up because this is very important from our NACO trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iligan. Any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. And, uh, Mr. Clerk, we've done Resolution 103, 106, 108, 109, 110. We're on Resolution 111.
Resolution 111-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to the Big Island Resource Conservation and Development Council to assist with expenses related to transportation and meals for Philippine cultural dance group Kayamanan Ing Lahi. Transfers appropriates $2,000, $2,500 out and from Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District 5, and credits same to the Department of Research and Development Tourism Promotion, Miscellaneous Contract Services Account, Big Island Resource Conservation and Development Council. Funds would be used to offset costs for transportation, meals, and other associated expenses for performances at the 52nd Annual Merry Monarch Festival and University of Hawaii at Hilo. Reference Communication 177, introduced by Mr. Palaika.
Mr. Palaika.
Motion to approve Resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Palaika and seconded by Ms. David. Uh, Mr. Palaika, you have the floor.
I just hope for all of your support. This is a Filipino dance troupe that's, um, supported by Iris. Is Iris still in Pohua? No. Well, she testified earlier and they, they do participate in the Merry Monarch program. Not to mention that Iris does do the fabulous, um, monarch clothing for Merry Monarch once in a while, but it's, it's a good culture exchange program between Philippines and Hawaii. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Mr. Palaika. Is there any other discussion on Resolution 1? Uh, Mr. Iligan.
I just want to say, um, with great, great gratitude to Councilmember Palaika. As a Filipino, I feel so ashamed of not having any money to give to this. And I'm so glad that Councilmember Palaika is putting this up. Thank you.
Mahalo, Mr. Iligan. Any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Mr. Clerk, Resolution 112-15.
Resolution 112-15 urges the Hawaii State Legislature to pass Senate Bill Number 1344 and House Bill Number 1491 relating to campaign spending. Urges the passing of both bills to support increased transparency and accountability in the electoral process regarding the funding sources for super PACs. Reference Communication 178, introduced by Mr. Iligan, WAVE GRE DC.
Mr. Iligan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I make a motion to approve Resolution 112-15?
Check.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligan and seconded by Mr. Palaika. Uh, Mr. Iligan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to take this time to explain the reasoning of why I put up Resolution 112-15. And to explain that, I just want to, um, state the purpose section for this, on the Senate Bill 1344 that states that the legislature finds that additional disclosure of information regarding election campaign contributions is necessary due to the decisions of the Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission and subsequent case law. These decisions have led to the proliferation of super PACs, which are non-candidate committees that make only independent expenditures and their virtually unlimited spending in the political arena. Hawaii's experience in the election cycles since Citizens United had been, as predicted, numerous super PACs have been informed, enormous amounts of money have been expended, and many of the true contributors remain hidden from the public. And I also want to mention that, according to the committee reports on Senate Bill 1344 and House Bill 1491, that this measure adds an additional level of disclosure to several sections of the Hawaii's campaign finance laws to further assist voters to follow the money and determine the individuals, organizations, or businesses seeking to influence their vote. Existing law requires political action committees that make only independent expenditures, more commonly known as super PACs, to disclose the names of the organizations or individuals that have contributed money to them. This measures require super PACs to disclose additional information to aid voters to determining the sources of funding behind those contributors to the super PACs. And this measure also addressed the political spending of dark money groups that include Section 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6) nonprofit organizations. The Campaign Spending Commission submitted written testimony that during the 2014 election, the top 25 super PAC contributors received a total of $7,825,793.45. An independent expenditure committee spent $2 million on advertising and $1 million on printing, postage, and mailing with the largest expenditure of $2 million under the category of "other." And I wanted to, um... And I wanted to, um, put that on the record, because I feel it is very important if we move to progress on transparency, that we support Senate bills and House bills like these, and I want to urge, um, my, the council members today to support Resolution 112-15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iligon. Uh, council members, are, is there any discussion on Resolution 112-15? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One, uh, one no from Mr. Onishi, so eight ayes, one no.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May, may I make a, um, motion to suspend the five-day holdover for Resolution 112-15?
Uh, Mr. Iligon, I think we might, if you can reword that motion, there's a lot of resolutions on here that might wanna, uh, suspend the rules for.
Okay, um, I don't know which ones, so I would have to rely on your guidance on this, Mr. Chair, and I'll so move your motion.
Okay, um... Hold on, Mr. Iligon, I wanna... Ms., Ms. Willie, real, real quickly, did you have a, a point of order, yeah?
Would like to make it for all of the, applicable to all of the resolutions.
Can you explain the need to, um...
Um, and the need is so that these funds in particular are, will be available sooner and not delay for the five-day, um, holdover?
Okay, uh, did you hear that, Mr. Iligon?
Um, yes, and I, I feel maybe the appropriate motion could be to suspend all contingency fund-related resolutions and Resolution 112-15.
Mr. Clerk, I, I wanna try to get the proper procedures on doing this again. I, I know we've gone through this.
Question, is there any reason why we don't wanna approve all of the resolutions, um, to...
No, we can have a motion to, uh, suspend council rules regarding the five-day holdover for all resolves, uh, passed today, March 18th.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that was a motion by Mr. Iligon, right? And seconded by Mr. Onishi. Okay, Mr. Clerk, on the motion to suspend the council rules regarding the five-day holdover on all the resolutions, voiceful. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, uh, thank you, council members. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Bill 27, on Bills for Ordinances, first reading.
Bill 27, amends ordinance number 14-81 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. Increases revenues in real property tax sale cost and expense account $2,000, $200,000, and appropriates the same to the real property tax sale cost and expense account. Funds would be used to accommodate a third real property tax foreclosure tax sale in fiscal year 2014, 2015. Reference Communication 136, introduced by Ms. Eoff, approved FC-10.